And to the Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It is Wednesday, February ninth, 2022. It is 1:01 PM. For public attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel or join by calling 360-252-9020, pin 1234. I am Carolina McKee, Chair of the Board. I'm joined by Vice Chair Ty Mensah and Commissioner Gary Edwards will be joining us here shortly. We're also joined by County Manager Ramirez Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, as well as many other staff members. Today, we will be discussing kept-on-salary KOS temporary policy. So I will hand this off to who wants to...
Tammy's going to say.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for taking the time to walk through this potential policy. I'm going to share my screen and I'm hoping...
Tammy, can you introduce yourself and what do you do for the county?
Yes, yes. I'm Tammy Devlin, Thurston County Risk Manager, and I have with me Brian Anderson. He's our Risk Analyst with Thurston County.
Thank you.
You betcha. Is everyone able to see the PowerPoint?
Yeah, it's in the presenters mode.
Is...I don't know how to change modes. Didn't seem to work like this last time. Well, I guess we'll stay in presenters mode, short of not being able to adjust it. Is everybody able to see it at least?
We can see it, but Tammy, you should be able to click on those three little dots, the circle with the three dots. Yep, that, and see hide presenter view.
Oh, there you go. Does that work?
And now clicked on the presentation, not the... So you're sharing the screen that has your PowerPoint, not the presentation.
Well, this is interesting.
If you go to the bottom right-hand corner, Tammy, where the slide bar is, the one right next to the, over one to the right, right there.
That it?
If you click on that, it should start your presentation.
My goodness. I'm sorry.
So I think your presentation's on a separate screen.
I tried to move it. I do see it on another screen, but I tried to move it as the primary and it won't work. It won't move over. Brian and I were changing screens and it wouldn't accept it. Well, I can move this. Hold on. How's that? Is that better? Okay. All right. Well, sorry for the complications all. Today, I'm presenting a potential temporary policy, and it's called kept-on-salary. And the reason why we are presenting it is to see if we can reduce our state-insured workers' compensation premiums to the county as a whole. It's a budget consideration each year, each county office budgets, payroll numbers, and this is part of the maintenance-level budget that each office sees. And so this policy, in a nutshell, would basically take several of our time-loss claims, move them into a non-time-loss claim status, keeping people on salary for 30 days if they're not able to come back to work, thereby changing that claim into a medical-only claim, thereby reducing our premiums. And so it gets a little complicated, but I'm going to try to keep it at high level as much as I possibly can. Basically, the county is charged premiums from LNI based on our industry in general, or as a county government. And then as part of that, our rate is based on our experience, Thurston County's experience. But then in addition, there is different rate classifications based on if you're law enforcement or if you're an office worker. Those are different rates. And we have a significant increase in our insurance premiums based on our experience itself. And if you look at this slide here, you can see this is our experience mod factor, that 1.32, and you can see the different risk class codes. So you've got law enforcement, you've got volunteer, you've got other workers, and it's this 1.32 is Thurston County's experience based on our claims and the costs of our claims. The medical aid fund, the accident fund, stay-at-work fund, those are categorized based on all workers in this category statewide, if that makes sense. So like, the accident fund pays for the injured worker's wage replacement. The medical only is for health and welfare expenses. Stay-at-work helps reimburse the employers and the wages that LNI is out of their, out of pocket. And so basically, if we were self-insured, the county would be paying all the money, charging for what we think the costs are going to be. But in this case, we buy our insurance through LNI, and so they charge us these premiums. So what effects does that experience mod factor have? If you can see here in the chart, they look at our last three years of claims, and they look at actual losses versus what they charged us in premium. And also what they look at is medical-only claims, which means there's no time loss involved, of claims that are over $3220. Then they look at all our time-loss claims. And that's where that experience mod factor comes into play. So as you can see, over 2019, 2021, you can see at the very bottom, the experience mod factor increasing. And you can also see in this chart, the green line is if Thurston County had an experience factor of one. And as you show here, we have a 1.32. We're 30% higher than the average. So excess premiums were being charged, 18 was $451,000, 2,1978, 319, and so forth. So what effects are these, is happening on the county? Our primary huge departments that are, were experiencing more claims, which you can imagine, are the sheriffs and corrections and Public Works. Those are our bigger loss claims. We do have claims that happen in all departments, but the main drivers of our claims are Public Works and the sheriff's department. And you can see here, we have the blue is Public Works, and the sheriff is kind of in that pink area. Let me go down here. So time-loss claims. Besides what's driving our insurance premiums is basically the loss of productivity that we don't really capture in budget-wise. You've got employees that potentially could take advantage of the situation. You've got, you know, the other employees that, hey, are having to cover while the person's out. And then we've, we have some cases over the last several years where the employee is never able to return to work. So that gets us to what can we do to control these premiums and our costs that we're paying? So first, as you know, we try to reduce all injuries. We do that in a number of ways. We're working on return-to-work programs. As a matter of fact, this, just this last year, we have been meeting with the sheriff's office. They're doing a significant job of trying to find alternative work for deputies, corrections officers, and that hasn't happened in the past. Also, Public Works is doing the same. So pushing this return-to-work program is going to reduce our claims costs, and then that brings in our kept-on-salary program. So employees basically, you know, get fully compensated. Right now, they're getting, if they're on time loss, they only get 65% of their wages. The sheriff's office and corrections, they have it in their program. They already basically have a kept-on-salary program. Their workers are kept whole for six months. But what they had been doing is turn, collecting their time-loss check and then turning that in to the department, which is a huge payroll process nightmare. So we have talked to them. They will no longer do that. Once we get an effective, official kept-on-salary program, all county government, all employees, with the exception of sheriff's office, will be a 30-day kept-on-salary. The sheriff will stay at their 66 months. And then if it's after those time periods, then it'll turn into a time-loss claim. But let me show you the impacts of the premiums. Had we done this? We went back and we looked the past four years. Had we had this program in place four years ago, what that would have meant? So again, let me refresh. Right now, if you're off, you get injured, and let's say you're going to be off for, the doctor says you can't return for three weeks. The first three days are not a covered loss. LNI doesn't allow us to cover it. It'll, it'll remain no coverage. If you're off more than 14 days, LNI comes back and pays 65% of the wages from the day one to your day 14 or whenever you return. So the kept-on-salary would be, we're going to put the employee on basically LNI administratively for 30 days. More than likely, they'll be coming back, because most of our injuries, they'll be back within the 30 days. The sheriff's office, they'll do the same. If any employee is injured and aren't able to come back within the 30 or the 180 days, then that claim goes from a medical-only claim to a time-loss claim. Okay. Now, this slide here will show you, on the left side, it shows our claims and our premiums without kept-on-salary. So 2018 to 2021. So this is what we're paying. This is what we paid, 2.6 million in premiums in 2021. And if you look on the right side of the column, you'll see, had we done kept-on-salary, the savings we would have seen in premiums, had we done this back then. So overall, the four years, we would have saved $607,000. Questions so far? Nope? Okay.
No questions.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Impact to premiums for the sheriffs and corrections, which is the lion's share? I've spent a couple of meetings with the sheriff's office. They're completely on board with this program. Their reduction in premium to their budget was about $207,000. Of course, they do get a little bit of windfall when their employees were bringing back the time-loss checks, but overall, they still would have saved a significant amount of money. The impact to Public Works premiums is about $168,000, and those are the two largest departments that have the majority of, of the claims that we see. So my proposal is that we, if, if it's approved by you folks to proceed, we would draft a temporary kept-on-salary policy, meaning temporary, to see if this would work. We're not going to see it right away. We want to make sure that our employees aren't taking advantage, et cetera, but we've got a pretty good handle administratively and management-wise in Public Works, as well as the sheriffs, to get those people back to work, getting them on modified duty and monitoring this potential result. But it looks like, I mean, if we did this, it would, it could significantly reduce our experience mod factor over time, and that would save the county a significant amount of money. Probably kind of questions, why haven't we done this in the past? Well, there's been a changing of the guard with different offices. There's a different mindset. This has been available as an incentive to employers for several years, but again, with the sheriff's office having embedded six-month kept-on-salary and then getting that little bit of windfall, they weren't, that past administration wasn't, you know, looking at making changes to that, but they are now. Public Works is on board as well with, with moving forward. We're still going to go after the stay-at-work refund money, but I'm thinking this might be a good way to maybe help with budget issues as it comes forward. So if, if you're all for that, I could move forward. HR would draft some temporary policy, submit it to the Department of Labor and Industries, and we would start the program. We would end up talking to, and we've been working with payroll, the unions, and getting all those arrangements already in place in the event that this is a, is a go. So if you have questions, I kind of covered it pretty quick, but... Robin, you know this stuff pretty good.
I'm not terribly familiar with the LNI stuff, so my question is, how much money... I see it to be a huge savings in premium, no doubt about that. But I guess that my question is around salaries. How much are we currently paying out or not paying out in salaries to people who have LNI claims? And, or how much are we getting back from LNI that we wouldn't be getting under this program? What's the other side of the coin?
Well, the other side of the coin is exactly what you see up here. This is what we're paying now. Budget-wise, budget-wise, right now, is there's no difference in the budget, because the FTEs and the wages are already budgeted into the maintenance level? So what, that, see what I mean?
They're budgeted, but they're not paid out.
Right.
So now, under this program, we would be paying it out, and that would reduce potentially the reversion to the general fund. So that's the amount that I'm looking for.
Well, the way I look at it is, FTEs are budgeted to be paid out, and there's money there to pay those out.
But we're not paying it out, and it results in a reversion. So I think that we need an estimate of how much, not just how much less in premiums, but how much more will the county be paying in salaries? Or how much less reimbursement from LNI will we be receiving to see what the real cost
So is that what you're saying is the percentage at the year-end, the percentage of, of budget that's unfunded, that goes back to the general fund every year that is not expensed? You're looking at that versus this?
Right.
If I'm saying it correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We can take a look at that. That's not something that we've actually looked at. I just looked at it as the bunny was budgeted and it's maintenance level. They're free to spend it. But good point. Yeah.
Right. But they don't. And that, and that's savings every year to the county.
Right. And right now, if, if they're on time loss, they're going to be getting 65% from LNI. So it would be, it's our 40%, it's that 40% that we would be paying time loss for that 30 days versus not, is what you're saying.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So, so I'd be happy to have someone from the budget team work with your office to figure that out.
Okay.
Hey, Tammy, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Oh my gosh, Tammy.
I'm sorry.
In the middle and the bottom, Tammy, the sheriff's screen, the green, green section.
It's not, it's not pulling up for some reason.
And you zoom window.
Yeah, the whole thing is, seems to be gone. Here we go. Oh, I'm so sorry. Stop sharing. It finally showed up. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, questions, commissioners? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes. My question to Tammy would be, this is all about injuries and the claims coming from a work-related injury. Is that right?
That's correct.
So how would this whole COVID thing affect if the employee claimed that that was a work-related injury? I don't, I don't know if there's any of that going on, or if that's maybe just speculation down the road? What would that impact?
We do have quite a few COVID claims, but when they approve the COVID claims as work-related, they're not being charged against the employer or experience rating.
But at some point, that's going to change, isn't it? As we get...
It might.
Kind of out of the pandemic business and into the normalcy section.
Right. But most of those injuries are, most of those injuries or the time amount that they're out is usually one or two weeks. It's not extended three, four, or five months. So I don't think it would have a significant impact, is my educated guess.
No. I mean, I, I kind of like where you're going with this from my perspective. I just, that's really the only question, and then I probably don't understand it good enough to get a good handle on what Robin's talking about, because she's looking at, the end result is accident. So I'm good. That's, that's good for me right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
I had two questions. One was Robin's, exactly, so I won't repeat that. And then the other one was just like the administration of all this. I don't know how all this works. I mean, you said, people are getting checks, but then they won't get the checks. It's like, is that all handled automatically? If we get approval of this, like, how much administrative hassle goes into changing the way we're doing all of this, given that the state's and LNI's involved and departments are involved and...
It'll be actually a lot less work, because right now, when the sheriff's office employees go on, on injury, they end up collecting their LNI check, and then they have to turn it into the, their administration, and then they have to buy back things. That'll end unless their, unless their injury goes beyond the six months. So for the first six months, it'll be a medical only. They won't be getting time-loss checks from LNI anymore. So administratively, it'll be much more streamlined.
Because LNI will know that we're paying them for, in this case, 30 days, and that'll all be worked through with LNI and the county?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, I just, obviously, I see where Robin was going exactly. I was kind of like, well, where are we? You know, what's the, what, how's it shake out eventually in terms of what we're saving? And if that looks good, then it seems like this would be a good approach, but, all right, thanks.
I was, thank you for that clarifying previous comment, because I was lost when Robin was asking the questions. I was like, I thought I was starting to get it towards the end, and then I felt like, I was like, oh, no. So I appreciated that last clarifying. That was actually going to be my question, like, what does, what does that mean in the bigger scope? So other than that, I do not have questions. I see the county manager's hand up. Go ahead, Ramirez.
Hey, Tammy, can, can you explain the nature of this temporary policy? And is that because the projections of potential savings of the premiums may not materialize? Or what is the nature of this temporary policy?
The, the nature would be driven towards reducing our experience mod factor, that 1.32. When you look at the formulas that they do, we're at 30% higher than the industry average, so I'm trying to get that down, and it's a significant multiplier, and that's what drives our premiums from LNI.
So I, I'm sorry, I was not clear on my question. What I was asking is why a temporary policy?
Why temporary? Because we want to make sure that the policy works, and if this works, it's a, it's a basically change to the employees. The employees wouldn't be paying, using their sick leave to supplement LNI's time loss anymore until after the 30 days. So if it's temporary, and then we take it away, the employees are going to say, oh, wait a minute, I didn't have to use my sick leave for the first 30 days, now I do. And so we want to be sure it's a temporary to make sure it works before we put something in permanent and get stuck with something that may not work.
So there's, so it'd still be a question whether the savings that you're projecting will materialize, because we're not sure.
Well, based on premiums, we're definitely going to save, if had we had it in place for the last four years, we would have saved $600 and some thousand in premiums. And we would just have to offset that by the difference of what Robin's asking in the budget-wise, how much is actually not spent of the maintenance-level payroll budget. That make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Still, since I think the temporary, the temporary nature of this policy is to make sure that if, if it doesn't work, the employees and their union, they don't consider this as a benefit, and by default, then a temporary policy, you can take it back.
Correct.
Right. So, and, so I think it's going to be working with, I mean, in the contracts, I believe, with the unions before this policy's in place, right? And I guess that's why Debbie's here.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Debbie Ruppman, HR, Labor Relations. I don't know that we need to modify the contracts. I actually think that that's probably not necessary, but we definitely would need to notify the unions. I think the unions are going to view this as a favorable change. I don't think any negotiation is going to be required. When we remove the temporary policy, if it comes to that, then the unions might raise some concerns, but by then, we'll have, assuming we move forward with this, we'll have data to demonstrate that we're not actually saving money. So I, I don't think we have to modify the contracts.
And that is probably exactly my concern, that obviously the unions will be in support of this policy, because some of the employees who may be injured, they will, they will not have to use their sick leave on their first two, three days, one, one to three days, right? Now, with this temporary policy, obviously, they, it would be an administrative leave, and it would take it back. That is going to be an issue.
Which is why it's important that it be a temporary policy.
Not, not only will they not have to use their leave for those first three days, they'll also get full salary for 30 days instead of a percentage of their salary. So this, this could end up costing the county quite a bit. Well, that's part of what we need to look at.
Yeah, I think that is a great point, because you have to be looking at, what is the net impact to the county as a whole?
Yep, that's, yeah. Exactly. And that's the importance of modified duty and managing these injuries at the get-go, which Public Works is doing a good job, and the sheriff's is really moving forward with supporting them.
Right. They're doing that now.
May I, I apologize for being late. I wanted to listen to the whole thing. I got caught up with something else. What I, from conversations that Tammy and I have had, and looking at the, the preliminary data, you know, I definitely support the temporary policy and having it be temporary for the specific reasons that Tammy and Debbie both talked about. But remembering, right, this is, these are individuals that got hurt while working, performing duties in their position as a county employee, and we certainly are trying to make sure that they get taken care of, but also get them back into, you know, back into working, back into their position as quickly as possible. And so I think from just a financial perspective, it makes sense, but also having it be temporary so that it's not taken or looked at as, okay, we gave them a benefit, we gave them something, and now we're pulling that away. But saying, here's what success is going to look like, evaluating it, and then implementing it if it turns out to be the case, so.
Okay, I don't see any further questions, so Ray, do you want to provide a comment? I see popped up.
Yeah, good afternoon. Ray Brady, UnderSheriff over at the sheriff's office. Obviously, I can't speak for the other departments. I can only speak for the sheriff's office. We've had, as Tammy mentioned, a couple conversations regarding this. At least for the sheriff's office, and you saw ours is a little bit different, we keep our employees whole for 180 days for six months, and so it is pretty significant. it is pretty significant, you know, in, in the fact that we do still pay their salaries. So that our employees have to, and it's incumbent on the employees because with time loss, the employees are the ones that actually receive the benefit from LNI. That is not a payment that's due to the county or the sheriff's office. Based on our contracts, we do require the employees to turn those checks in. But sometimes tracking down those checks and the timeliness of them and some of those can end up being a hassle. So there would be a little bit of a loss to the sheriff's office from those checks that are turned back in. But we think that the benefits of something like this far outweigh that. And, and again, that's a loss directly to the sheriff's office. But just the, the not having go through the hassle of, you know, waiting for things to be approved, approved with LNI, waiting for the checks to come in and, and just dealing with, I don't recall, Tammy may know, but if those checks come once a month or twice a month, but I know our staff is constantly trying to track down checks from our staff. So we're, we're definitely supportive of it. If it's something that moves forward.
Thank you. Okay.
Could I ask you about the next steps, Madam Chair, when you're done?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
My suggestion will be to, Tammy, to work with Robin's staff to come up with what is the actual net impact to the county budget. When that information is completed, let me know and I will bring this out in the agenda setting. And at that point is where the board will have all that information in front of them to determine whether it's something they like to pursue or not.
Perfect. All right. Sounds good. Well, thank you everyone for your time. Appreciate your attention and Ray apparently had a question.
Sorry, can I just ask one other thing, maybe from Tammy? Wasn't there also, there's cost savings that will go to every single county employee in their workers comp that they pay each month on their checks?
That's correct. Part of the experience mod factor gets charged out. The employee pays a portion of all LNI based on their risk class code that you saw on that one chart. And so if our experience mod factor goes down, the employees will also benefit in having less deductions taken from their checks. Correct.
Thanks for raising that, Ray. That's an interesting point. It didn't come out. Thanks.
Yeah, no, that's really good to know. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Okay, with that, we have our next step. So we are adjourned. Thank you all there so very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon.